Hello, everyone, and welcome to Athens City Council. I think there are a few chairs dispersed throughout. Please utilize those. We do start tonight's meeting with a public hearing. So the students who are here from Dr. Setus's class, please know that we will start our normal council meeting after the public hearing. This public hearing is for... Council has received a recommendation from the Athens City Planning Commission to amend Athens City Code, zoning code, Section 23.04.03, permitted uses in R3 residential zone, multifamily, to permit temporary housing shelters as a permitted accessory use for the Gathering Place located at 1, 5, and 7 Congress Street. At this time, we invite the public to come up to the podium to share any comments with City Council regarding this recommendation from the Planning Commission. I will simply ask that you state your name and your address, and whether you represent a group or just yourself, and then you will have three minutes to share with Council your comments.
My name is Aaron Leatherwood. I live at 100 Coventry Lane. Homelessness is a national problem. I appreciate the efforts we've made as a city over the years to do our part. The Gathering Place, Timothy House, Good Works, the Salvation Army, Athens Hope, the Clem's House, my sister's place, the Athens County Homeless Shelter, and so many other organizations in Athens all work hard to prevent and alleviate homelessness, and I am proud to have supported their work. The city also purchased a motel to provide transitional housing. Two things are clear: we are currently doing a lot, and we will never be able to do enough. It's hard to solve national problems at the local level. The Gathering Place's desire to provide tent wagons is well-intentioned. The Gathering Place has mentioned that traditional shelters are not an option for the homeless people with mental health and/or addiction issues which the tent wagons would serve. The proposals before council are problematic for several reasons. Uptown has large numbers of people consuming substances late at night, mostly beer, but it's not an environment which is conducive to recovery. Putting an attic next to a school is a bad idea for any number of reasons. Drug crimes within 1,000 feet of a school face escalated penalties. The site is less than 200 feet from the Athens Middle School. When we're trying to help people, we need to set them up for success. We should not house addicts in an unsupervised uptown environment next to a school. The site will set up the people we want to help for failure. What we need, as one of the project's proponents stated in an earlier meeting, it is important that tent wagon sites offer the ability to support people. We have options. The new fire station on Stimson is an ideal location. It has space for wagons and ample room for portable bathrooms. The fire station also has facilities which could be made available on an outreach basis. Best of all, the fire station is located far away from uptown. It's not within 1,000 feet of a school and is staffed 24/7 by individuals who are experienced at providing first aid. The city's new homeless shelter on Columbus Road and the Athens County Public Library would also be excellent choices in this regard. I've been the victim of crime twice in the past five years, most recently involving a felony on North Congress, involving a repeat offender on probation. In both cases, the perpetrators were homeless people. Also in both cases, despite the perpetrators being caught and pleading guilty to the felony on North Congress, no jail time was served. As a straight up-down vote, I would urge Council to vote no on these ordinances. However, as a community, we pride ourselves on collaboration, and I believe there's an opportunity to find a middle ground in which these could be operated on a pilot basis in a well-supported and continuously supervised location far from alcohol in schools. I would expect the city to require background screening to ensure that these facilities are not made available to individuals with a misdemeanor or felony criminal record. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I am Nathan Crowley. I live in the Plains. And I am a member of the GP. For those of you that don't know, that's a short for the Gathering Place. I have been a member for two years, and homelessness has affected me directly, twice in my life. So has violent crime. I was a victim of violent crime most recently when a man broke into my house, who was high and out of his mind. And in the past, I was a victim of violent crime, of attempted mugging right here in Athens while working as a Jimmy John's employee. Okay? In this, both instances, despite their criminal history, I urged the court for mercy. Because I understand that a lot of what fueled them was because of their addiction issues. It was not because they were bad people. Addicts are not bad people. They just make, sometimes, bad choices based on their addiction. But on to the matter at hand. I think the Gathering Place is a secure location. That parking lot is actually locked, okay, for the chain, a physical chain. And from my understanding, from talking to the Director of the Gathering Place, Ginger, it will be monitored 24/7. And I understand the concerns about the possibility of them getting alcohol and drugs, but that exists now. Okay? They're out on the streets now. They have no shelter now. Okay? So... And for them, this gives them that one step. And while the firehouse seems like a good option, they haven't offered that. So this is the best we got right now. And I truly support Ginger's mission in this, the Gathering Place's mission. I think that it will be well taken care of. In my time at the Gathering Place, there has not been any violent altercations. So I just ask you to please consider that we are doing a thing that is in the best interest of not only the city of Athens, but to show our humanity.
Thank you very much.
I am David Herninger, 19 East Carpenter Street, me again. I'm here to voice my support for the Conestoga Hut project. If passed by council, people who need to stay and want will begin to stabilize their lives by receiving support from the GP staff to get permanent housing, jobs, education, whatever they need, what they may need. This truly will be in hand up, and it's much safer for everyone involved. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Grace Pavage. I'm a student at OU, and I live in the house directly next to the Gathering Place, 15 North Congress. I'm representing my nine other roommates also. We just wanted to voice our concern with this project taking place next door to our house. A lot of my roommates work at bars, and they have to walk home late at night by themselves, and they already feel unsafe having to do that in the first place. And there's just a lot of safety concerns and just a little bit of uneasiness in being uncomfortable with this happening. We live in a house with all girls. I'm sure there's a lot of other houses on Congress Street and surrounding areas that feel the same way. Sorry, I'm like looking at the things I have written down. We didn't know that this was going to happen when we signed our lease two, three years ago. I'm sure, like, the girls that are living there next year have no idea this is going to happen. And we should just be able to feel comfortable and safe in our own home. And, yeah, it's just... I don't know. I don't really know what else to say, but thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Mason Korb. I've lived in Athens. I'm living at 18 Euclid. And I was a student here, and I worked for AmeriCorps, and I've been in Athens for a bit. Thanks for sharing your concerns. I just wanted to share some of the data and talk about what this looks like. So people that commit these types of crimes are often people that are very desperate, and not having housing makes you more desperate, but having a place to sleep makes you a lot safer and allows you to make safer decisions. So there was a Denver study that found that people in supportive housing were arrested 52% less often for minor offenses than unsheltered individuals. A UCLA study found an 80% reduction in crime among house participants within 18 months. Ohio's own Returning Home Project showed participants with supportive housing services were 40% less likely to face rearrests. So in general, when we put people in safe places, they're able to make safer decisions, and I want to voice my strong support for the project. And I also want to just generally suggest that when the city puts things out, like no camping, or asks police officers to move houseless people from one spot to another, that we offer other options. So there's a bridge next to the public library that says right underneath that bridge, "No camping here", but there aren't other options. It doesn't say, "You can call this number". And when police have moved people from A to B, they usually don't. All the anecdotes that I've heard, they don't offer another option. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Megan, 15 Station Street.
Hi, I'm Nora at 55 Mill Street.
We are students at Ohio University, and we are currently interning at the Gathering Place. Before we start, I would like to make corrections and clarify our numbers for our door-to-door neighborhood outreach. We completed conversations with 34 neighbors of the Gathering Place. 32 out of 34, which is 94%, were supportive or expressed no concerns about the Conestoga Huts. 2 out of 34, only 6% did not support or had concerns. 11 doors went unanswered. For this week, we decided to touch on the personal experiences of members at the Gathering Place and discuss the Conestoga Hut project with them.
Previous concerns have been about the safety of students, but our observations this week have shed light on the fears and uncertainties of unhoused individuals. The following is a collection of quotes, not our experience as interns, but those who are in most need of the Conestoga Hut projects.
I have survived more things than I can count. And to survive, you have to find the good. The Conestoga Huts are a good thing that can turn the tables.
I know someone in the community who has lost a leg from sleeping on the bench in the winter.
The Gathering Place has spent 50 years helping to make things better for people like me, and like you, and like all of us. In those 50 years, we have not had any issues with the community being harmed by the programming.
Not everyone is homeless by choice. They just need to get their feet on solid ground. These huts are a start and mean more help and safety.
Last winter, a woman I know froze to death because she couldn't leave her dogs alone in her tent.
I know the stigma that is attached to being displaced. I know the fear and the misunderstanding, and I know the pain. I also know the hope that simply having a shelter and a wellness and treatment program can give.
I stood in the rain and watched my children's memories, drawings, and report cards dissolve in my hands because I had nowhere else to go.
I feel like society doesn't care about me. We don't value our own species enough or help provide basic necessities.
I served in the military for 13 years. I was deployed twice to Afghanistan and Iraq. I did everything right, and I still sleep in my car.
Losing things is devastating. Intense, stuff gets stolen and ripped, but these huts have a lock for my safety.
We all want help. We all want to make things better. Sometimes, it's about finding that way, the way that you can make things better that other people can't. From these personal statements from members of the Gathering Place, you can hear the desperation and inherent necessity for housing.
The temperature is going to drop. Winter is coming, and hypothermia can set in anywhere below 40 degrees.
This isn't just a proposal. It's a lifeline. We are not standing here today to debate policy. I don't care about your biases or fears for this project when you have a safe place to go to at night. We are here because these are people that we know and we care about who are sleeping outside in the wintertime. This is a cry for help, for dignity, shelter, and a chance at stability.
Don't let your prejudices speak louder than your compassion. Pass the Conestoga Hut proposal. Show the Athens community that we are willing to act with humanity, with heart, and with urgency.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Excuse me, is there a sign-up sheet that's still circulating somewhere? Thank you, Mayor. Please, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
Hello, my name is Shelby Elzinga, and I currently live in Nelsonville. I have come to speak as a formerly homeless person to exemplify that it is possible to be homeless without a substance abuse disorder. I do not even drink. I have a bachelor's degree and several tech certifications that are supposed to be highly sought after. I even run my own business doing tech support. But even with these qualifications, I have found myself with unstable housing because I have undiagnosed autism and faced gender and various other disability discriminations, such as not being able to stand for two hours, which locks you out of most entry-level roles. With the frankly asinine job market, rising prices, and many other issues, I am not uncommon, and I am going to become a more common example. I hear the issues around the offenders. I have dealt with them myself, but I do not think it is an issue of whether to house homeless people, but more of an issue of why our legal system continues to let them reoffend. Perhaps this project needs some of its details modified in order to reflect that, but ultimately, such housing for the homeless that has as little bureaucracy as possible should be considered if we are to have a functioning society. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Allison Perry, and I'm a student here at Ohio University. I also live at 15 North Congress Street, and I'm representing all of the girls over there, or College Street. Sorry, I'm really bad at my address. But I want to first start off by saying it's not... Like, we understand what the project is trying to do, and we support that. I think it's more where they're trying to put them. I know that homelessness is obviously a very prevalent thing in Athens, but I think more of our concern is where they're planning on putting the huts. Like we said, we live in a house with all girls. We don't have... We're not very good at defending ourselves if something were to happen. And there also are a bunch of other houses with only girls, I'm sure, on that street as well. And we should feel safe and comfortable in our own house. And along with that, I know I'm not a middle schooler, but there is the concern of that the middle school is there. And when I am walking to my classes, I see children, like students, middle schoolers, walking along the sidewalks. And I know that my parents, we've obviously brought this concern up to them and what was happening, and they are not... They don't feel safe for us. They don't feel like this is a smart place to do this. And I can only imagine what the middle schoolers' parents are thinking as well. So I just wanted to bring up the aspect of walking home, feeling safe. And I think we're not against the ideas and goals of the project, but I think it's more the placement of where this is occurring. And I think that if it were to be picked up and moved somewhere else, that there would be a lot more support for this. Also, there is a college campus, and if I were to tour and... Also, there is a college campus, and if I were to tour and see and know this, I know that my parents probably wouldn't have felt as comfortable with me going there, and I also wouldn't feel as safe. And I know that the university does bring in a lot of people to Athens. So, yeah, just wanted to bring awareness up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kayla Campbell. I live in the Plains. I'm a member of the GP. I also am a manager at Taco Bell. I walk home from Athens at 4:00 or 5:00 a.m. some nights to the Plains through Congress. It's a very quiet area. Not a lot happens. We do not have a lot of incidents when we are at the GP to participate. You are trying to get sober. You are trying to better your life. They have helped me and my husband and my two kids get out of homelessness. When we first started, we were jumping hotel to hotel, barely paying. My paycheck was barely in a fortnight. So, they are a big help, and they do help you get better and help you find what is causing your issues to get you where you can succeed and strive in life. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello again, Kent Langus. I'm the senior resident at Mike's Bridge House, 34 West Washington. It's the recovery sober living house that is next to The Gathering Place and shares the parking lot for the proposed site. I've told my story before, it's already on the record, but, you know, valedictorian, honors tutorial college at the university. I also built the sound systems and managed two of the bars uptown, so I'm very familiar with student life and things like that. A lot of them still know the name Kento. You know, less than seven months ago, I was homeless, living under bridges and whatnot, and I was facing addiction and substance use issues and mental health issues. With Mike's Bridge House and the programming by The Gathering Place, which has been in operation for almost 50 years specializing in recovery, mental illness, substance use, all of the things that people have concerns about, and yes, I do live next to the middle school as well, but if I did not have the shelter, the safety and security of shelter, a wellness and treatment program, which all of the individuals that would be considered for this pilot program have wellness and treatment programs. They are in recovery. They are on the path to recovery. This is not, you know, some crazy Phish concert parking lot where a whole bunch of random, you know, people are going to be in there, you know. In less than seven months, I have not only embraced recovery, I've become a certified peer recovery specialist. I live in the house attached to the parking lot, so I am there 24 hours a day, almost, except for when I work, because I am also gainfully employed, which I was not able to say seven months ago or when I was living under bridges. I no longer face uncertainty, but just that one thing of having shelter, of having security, that allowed me to come so far. I was a featured speaker a few weeks ago at an event at ABH called Appalachian Stories of Resilience and Recovery. I was a featured panelist. Hope is infectious. Hope trumps stigma. We need to break stigma. As far as the safety concerns are going, I am not kicking any of the members from the GP out of my yard at 3:00 a.m. for urinating in the bushes or throwing their beer cans everywhere, you know. I understand that student life is student life. They need to be allowed to embrace this part of their personal evolution. But also, we as a community and as adults need to not shelter people from the fact that the world can be difficult sometimes. It can, we all know this. But with what I could accomplish in such a short amount of time, who are we to deny three other individuals in our community that same opportunity who are participating in wellness and treatment programs? You know, it's getting colder outside. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ruby Gallo, and I live at 65 South Court Street. And I'm speaking on behalf of my friends who live at 14 North High and 15 North Congress Street. I want to start by saying that I care deeply about helping those in need, and I truly respect The Gathering Place's mission. However, I have serious concerns about the proposal to build temporary housing huts at 7 North Congress and about expanding the zoning change citywide. My biggest concern is safety for myself, my neighbors, and for the individuals who would be placed in these huts. Putting small shelters in a parking lot with limited supervision, minimal access to bathrooms, and no clear security measures raises real safety issues. Without proper oversight, this could put both residents and surrounding community members at risk. I live nearby, and I would no longer feel safe walking alone at night or even parking near that area if this plan goes forward. It's not because I lack compassion, it's because this approach doesn't ensure accountability or safety for anyone involved. If this goal is to help people, we need real solutions, transitional housing, mental health resources, and long-term support systems that protect everyone's well-being. Quick fixes like these huts don't provide that. I urge the council to vote no on this proposal and focus on safe, sustainable housing options that truly serve both the unhoused community and the neighborhoods around them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tara Boring. I live at Timothy House, and I'm also part of The Gathering Place. And I can tell you from experience, I lived out on the streets for five months. I've been stolen from twice, robbed. And before I came to The Gathering Place, I just felt that I could do all this on my own. Well, I ended up getting with Ginger and all the crew over there at The Gathering Place, and I knew I couldn't do this alone. And by the time I'm there, I've got all this help. I go to my meetings, what meetings there is, and then I talk, and we talk everything out. I mean, if it wasn't for Ginger and everybody, I don't know where I would be. I mean, but the huts, they are 100% going to be safe for anybody that needs it for the wintertime. Because I believe if I was out there in the wintertime and I was in Athens, that's probably where I would stay, is in my huts. So, but from experience of someone that lived out on the street, it's a dangerous world. Everybody ought to be thankful that they have someplace to go. For me, I choose to be out on the street. But I came, and now I'm here speaking about it because it works for everybody. If they need it, just come on aboard and come over. We all will talk to you. And come and see how it all is ran. And personally, you would see that it's being ran the way that it needs to be ran by Ginger and the rest of the crew. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, President Crowell and members of the committee, for the opportunity to speak this evening in support of rezoning to allow The Gathering Place to build more Conestoga Huts on their property. My name is Ari Faber. I live at 23 Meadow Lane, and I am here tonight as the executive director of United Campus Ministry. In 2015, my parents kicked me out for being queer. That's what brought me to Athens. I spent several months couch surfing between two cousins who were already living here. I was grateful to have a roof over my head, but I knew it could disappear at any moment if one of their roommates decided they didn't want me there. I was one conversation away from being alone and outside. That experience shaped the way that I understand housing insecurity. It showed me how quickly anyone can lose stable housing and how terrifying that uncertainty feels. When we talk about people who are unhoused, we sometimes forget that they are not strangers, they are community members who are in crisis. They are people who, like I once was, are simply trying to find safety and stability. They are not the boogeyman seeking to harm you or to face your property, they are our neighbors. The Gathering Place's Conestoga Hut project offers those neighbors a small but powerful measure of safety and dignity. It's a modest, well-supervised pilot, just a few huts on a fenced, camera-monitored lot next to an organization that has been serving Athens for nearly 50 years. These huts provide secure, temporary shelter for people already connected to mental health and case management services. This isn't about turning Athens into a tense city, as some have said. It's about creating opportunity. It's about ensuring that when someone in our community loses their footing, we have a place for them to land. Athens has always been a city that leads with compassion. Approving the rezoning continues that tradition, and it tells our neighbors that they still belong here, that their safety matters, and that our community refuses to turn its back on those who are struggling. I urge you to approve the rezoning and allow The Gathering Place to move forward with this humane and responsible project. Thank you for your time and commitment to building in Athens where everyone has the dignity of a safe place to sleep.
Good evening, thank you, council. My name is Nick Tepey, and I am speaking tonight as a private resident of Athens, living at 1 Ellis Avenue. As I've mentioned in previous statements to council, while I am speaking as a private citizen on this topic, my professional experience deeply informs my views on this matter. I have worked in public libraries for 25 years, and I have worked with individuals living in insecure housing for all of those 25 years. Tonight, I would like to comment on a theme I have seen in the statements made by those who are opposed to this initiative, namely that those of us who support this initiative are downplaying or ignoring the safety concerns that are being raised and not taking those concerns seriously. Nothing could be further from the truth. Working in and managing a public facility, I have seen every type of bad behavior that every member of the public is capable of. If you can imagine it, I have seen it in a public library, probably some things you can't imagine. Whatever safety issues the opponents can imagine, rest assured that I have seen it and I've dealt with it in managing my public facilities. I have evicted people exhibiting bad behavior from libraries more times than I can count. While some of those individuals were people living in insecure housing situations who inadvertently or otherwise brought the chaos of their lives with them into the library, far more were unruly teenagers, people angry with each other or with the library, and people with ill intentions who had, excuse me, that had nothing to do with their housing situation. I've also gotten to know many individuals living with insecure housing who are some of my best patrons, who would come to the library in the morning, use the computers, read magazines, stay warm or cool, chat with me, chat with their friends, and leave at the end of the day without any trouble. This should not be surprising. If you have nowhere to go, you don't want to get kicked out of one of the few places you can go. I do not have any concerns about The Gathering Place's Conestoga Hut project because I know the people who will be running the facility, and I know that they have as much, if not more, experience than I do in working with people living with these circumstances. And they know how to handle the safety concerns that come with managing a facility like this. I also have no concerns about conditional zoning allowing similar projects elsewhere in the city, because I know the city's safety service director and the Board of Zoning Appeals will do their due diligence in assuring that any facility offering services like this will be able to manage it effectively. Those who claim that this will somehow lead to tents all over the city are engaging in a slippery slope fallacy. It is false, it is fear-mongering, and it severely denigrates the professionalism of the safety service director and the Board of Zoning Appeals, who will be deciding whether or not to allow conditional use of certain properties. The bottom line here is that as a city, we essentially have two choices: change nothing about what we are doing and continue to live with the chaos and suffering that come with the housing crisis that has grown worse over the last five years and will likely continue to grow for the foreseeable future, or pursue any and all options available to us to alleviate the situation for the benefit of not just the people who are living without secure housing, but also for our whole community. When the people who can be helped are being helped, there are far fewer of the sorts of incidents that the opponents are concerned about, and there are more resources available to deal with the real safety concerns. Those of us who are advocating for this initiative represent decades of experience in working with individuals who are living with insecure housing, possibly centuries. And we are all saying that we must pursue these solutions in order to improve the lives of everyone in our community. Please trust in the experience and expertise represented here and give us the tools we are asking for to address those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Eric Johnston. I'm a social worker, and I'm here speaking as a private citizen. I live at 300 Highland Avenue. I just want to voice my absolute support for this project. I think the realities of today are that all of us, or not maybe all of us, but many of us, are but a few paychecks away from facing homelessness. Many of us in this room have experienced such, right? I think this is the compassionate thing to do, as Nick pointed out. As a city, we have an opportunity here to do things differently. And I hear the concerns about safety. I don't want those conflated with this project. Safety is important and should be addressed, but I feel like that's maybe a separate issue that could be taken up in other ways. The connection with the university can be improved, the connection with the city and the university. There's a lot of different things we can do here, but I think we have an opportunity that shouldn't be missed to care for those around us and maybe even care for those in this room. So, again, just want to voice my support. Thank you for your time.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Kelly Brar, and I'm here tonight as a board member of The Gathering Place. I do not live here in the city of Athens, but I do live in Athens County, actually in Coolville. I've proudly served on the board for seven years, and I have been involved with The Gathering Place for well over a decade. My son went to Athens Middle School for three or four years, and as a parent, we had no concerns with him leaving school many days, most days, walking uptown, downtown, over to the community center, wherever he wanted to go. I'd also like to take just a few minutes to focus on key facts and common sense truths, especially amidst all the information and unfortunately, the misinformation that is out there. If we truly want to talk about facts, common sense, and community, we have to start with the people who are working every day to be a part of that solution. These are the people who care deeply about addressing issues that affect all of us, like affordable housing, income inequality, lack of employment, among many other things. Every single day, and again, as several people have mentioned, for almost 50 years, The Gathering Place has been and offers that solution. It's a place where individuals in recovery, folks who want to be in recovery, sometimes people just living with a mental health illness, who are trying to be in recovery, can find community, they can find stability, and they find hope. The Gathering Place is not a place where people gather to use drugs, commit violence, commit crimes, drink alcohol. It is structured supportive environment with rules and accountability and community. In fact, very often, when you go in there on an afternoon, you'll find a game of Uno, some Bingo, people playing music, making some meals together, among several other really good community-level services that these folks need. Members are expected to follow guidelines that are outlined in our handbook. And as a board member and as a collective board, we take that responsibility very seriously. I, myself, personally have worked in healthcare and in the behavioral health space for over 30 years, and several of our fellow board members bring professional expertise and credentials as well. We are deeply committed to ensuring that The Gathering Place operates safely, a We are deeply committed to ensuring that the Gathering Place operates safely, effectively, and with compassion. We have complete confidence in our executive director and the staff, who follow best practices, protocols, and provide ongoing and continuous monitoring to make sure our programs run responsibly. There is no better time than now to move forward, especially in partnership with the Co-Create project and the development happening in Columbus Road. Lastly, it's important to remember the folks that we help, that who need our help are our neighbors, our brothers, our sisters, our friends, our coworkers, and the same people who have the Gathering Place has been helping for decades. Why would we turn our backs on them now? This is not a reckless step, but is a responsible one towards compassion, safety, and progress. And to those who are afraid or uncertain, I understand that fear, but I ask you to consider the perspective of those who have so little. The people who need these temporary shelters are not afraid. They are hopeful. They look forward to the opportunity to have safety, dignity, and a chance to rebuild. Shame on us if we don't at least try to help make that situation better for someone else. This is not about politics or fear, it's about humanity. It's about compassion, responsibility, and the belief that everyone deserves a chance to live with dignity. Thank you.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Mark Sutton. I was born and raised here in Athens. My father actually used to be on city council. His name is on the parking garage over there. I'm here because I've been a social worker for approximately 40 years. I'm now retired, but my issue has been with the fear-mongering that I've seen that some of my peers from this town, such as Jack. I'm here because of Jack writing the letter to the editor, feeling out a lot of fear-mongering. And that's all I heard from the last, Kim Good, when she spoke at one of the meetings, same thing. Even Chris Cornwell. And I'm really disappointed in their views, but my view is very opposite. I have been assaulted in this town, either by friends or students. Students are much more dangerous than any homeless person you're going to ever run into. I'm just appalled that we, upstanding community members in here, are so afraid of what? I don't know what they're afraid of, because everything that I read was not based on fact. It was, you know, obviously, I've heard what the Gathering Place says and what the media has reported, and all of that disputes any of their concerns about fear. So I pray that you pass this, and we really need it. Because, you know, these people are living in our community, whether you like it or not. And a lot of them, many of them, are friends of mine who are from here. So they're not coming from out of town, but you know, winter's coming up, we need to protect them. So please do what is right, make sure that this happens.
I was going to wait a little longer, but I get that's by cue. My name is Jack Stauffer. I live on Elmwood. I'm here to represent myself as well as quite a group of concerned citizens. We're not a group, we don't have a name, we are a group of concerned citizens. This letter, y'all received it, it was in the Athens Messenger, it was on the Independent, it was faxed or emailed around town. Where it says "fact," it's a fact. Where it says "concern," it's a concern. We make reference to an incident that happened in the past and in the not-too-recent past that has a direct reflection on the past and present people running the Gathering Place. This letter I had quite a bit to do with input on. Where it says "fact," it is a fact. I believe you could verify that from the information that's in the letter. For those of you who know me fairly well, you already know I have neither the intellect or technical or computer skills to produce this document. I'm the front man, the fall guy, the guy with the internal strength to face the hateful blowback that I expect to follow and hear tonight. Many working folks, business people, fellow citizens gave input to our team. Folks still in business must be careful. I'm retired. I delivered it to Debbie to email. I tried several times over two weeks to talk with Ginger at the Gathering Place, but she never returned my calls, as I didn't want to cause her hardship or embarrassment. By the time I found her returned voicemail at 516 on the day I had already been to City Hall, in any event, this is accurate. I hope you use your knowledge of facts in the past to realize that we don't know what could happen there in the future. And if you pass this and something goes wrong up there, it will be a poor reflection on you folks and our city. It could damage our city's image to the point of affecting OU enrollment, which would devastate our town. They have done some good work, I'm sure, in the past, but you, we, need to look out for the future. I have an idea and I plan, I think will work well for all parties involved. I will speak to that at first reading, unless you want to let me do it now.
Hi, my name is Dr. Kate Enger. I've been working in the social sciences for decades. I'm a little concerned to hear the kind of "we versus them" sense in here. The reality is, we are them. Many are just looking around this room. Statistics tell me one out of five of us will be diagnosable with a mental disorder this year. Lifetime, one out of three. It's not them. And people with mental illness are not scary, they're not dangerous. Statistically speaking, they are much more likely to be the victims of crime than to be the perpetrators of crime. Do you know where a woman, a young woman, is most likely to be assaulted? That would be a college campus, not near a homeless shelter. I have spent thousands and thousands of hours in rehabs, in homeless drop-in shelters, recently in eviction courts in three different counties. I've not felt unsafe in any of those places. I have been unsafe in other places, but not in those places. For every three families who need housing right now, there's one place available. So people are not choosing to be homeless. The people I know right now that are facing homelessness were injured, they were ill, they left work to take care of somebody who was ill, they were abandoned by a partner or abused by a partner, they were rejected by family because of their sexual orientation or some other difficulty. These days, it could even be a political issue. I've actually seen that a few times. The recovery community members that I know, people who are in recovery in this community, are some of the finest, wisest, and most productive citizens we have. If we give people shelter, if we help them, they become those fine, wise, productive citizens. If we just tell them to go somewhere else, there is no somewhere else, and they are us. We need to be realistic. Thank you.
Want to make sure that people in the hallway know that this is coming down to the last chance to approach the podium and speak, or anyone in the room, obviously, but seeing... Here we go. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Autumn Brown, and after this, I will be going home to my warm house at 5316 New Floodwood in Nelsonville. I work in Athens, live in Athens County, and I simply wanted to back up some of the statements that have been shared tonight. As we have been working on this Conestoga Hut project, I am now a board member for the Gathering Place. I became a board member from the Gathering Place because I was one of the leadership that helped with the Emergency Warming Center. That was a partnership with the city of Athens. Thank you for letting us use the firehouse. We're in process of trying to figure out what that will look like this year. So in that opportunity where I was able to help operate the warming center, I met a lot of the individuals that would benefit from a Conestoga Hut. Individuals who are living in Athens, in random places that I don't know about, you don't know about, but they're here, on the streets, in the woods, making do. And I've heard the fears, it's not an us against them. In this situation, we're looking, I sit in the Co-Create Housing Team, working on these solutions, and, you know, there are no other places for the Conestoga Huts to go. The Gathering Place has stepped up, they have a plan, the Co-Create Team supports this. We've been working with the city of Athens to make sure this will work for everyone involved. There will be close oversight. The facilities will be maintained, the individuals who are selected to go into those Conestoga Huts will be, as shared by many of the members, in active support of resources. Not everyone that's going to go in those huts may be an addict, that's always a go-to. These are individuals who are down on their luck, who need help, and this has been very well thought out. This has been several years in the plannings, and so this isn't taken lightly. If this opportunity is given to the Gathering Place, it's supported by Co-Create. We're also supporting the shelter down on Columbus Road to help make sure that they're using all the resources available to have a thoughtful plan in place. And the Conestoga Huts are just a very small start to opening a door to be able to support opportunities for people to get into homes, homes that aren't available right now. And so I'm happy to reach out, anyone can reach out to me. I'm easy to find my contact information, but if you need more information, there are details about this plan that really show that it's thought out and well-intended, and if there are issues, we will be working together to address those as this pilot project starts. So, thank you very much.
So we are about 55 minutes into a public hearing. And just want to make sure everybody that would like to speak has the opportunity to do so.
Hello, Ginger Schmollenberg. I work at 7th North Congress Street. I live at 4141 Williams Road, Shade, Ohio. I am not one to do a tit for tat of every misinformation that people are calling facts to refute that. I've been able to, on my own, give information to those people that need to. But I do want to say, as I'm listening to everyone, I've listened for a while, which is why I did not want to speak until I've listened to everyone. We have never said, something that Erin said, it has never been said that the Conestoga Huts are for individuals because they have a mental illness and it's better for them. That was very confusing to me. And also, I think there's also some confusion with, everyone's talking a lot about addicts and all these different things. And yes, indeed, we do serve individuals that do have lived experience of a mental health, are coexisting substance use disorder, but that's 25% of our population. And so you have to understand that these Conestoga Huts are for individuals that are unhoused in general. I certainly, my plan, I did not want to say this out loud, but I'm planning on putting vulnerable women that we serve in these huts, everyone, you know, because that's what seems to be the most need. I'm not saying it'll always be women. And I do want to respond to our next-door neighbors at 15 North Congress. I did not want to bring this out in the open, ladies, but before we ever started having meetings, like before September 8th, that first weekend that they moved in, not knowing about anything, I have on video, and I have it here, we caught one of them coming over, breaking our chain on the porch, they were obviously under the influence, stole a chair, they ended up throwing it back into our side yard. And so, and we were actually more concerned, because they hobbled, it almost looked like they would fall onto Congress Street. So, and then my program manager, a couple days later, recognized the individual, went over and talked to them. They were very polite to her, and she just mentioned of how we do monitor, we do see things. No apologies, no one's offered to replace that $60 chain. And I don't, I'm not going, you know, I do have this, but, you know, I did not turn it into the police, I did not turn it into judiciaries, because I believe in second chances. I believe that individuals should, you know, have an opportunity to learn from their mistakes. But I just think, like, who are we afraid of? When that happens, it's like the Gathering Place, we do have 15 cameras. Anyone in the past few years since we've had cameras that's come onto our campus and done anything to do with drugs or drinking, they have been young people. It has not been the individuals that we serve. So I think that's something really important. And I think everyone, our community, said it for us. I am not one to go into running an unsound program. I really want safety for our neighborhood. I want safety for the individuals that I serve. And I know we can do assault program, we have a record, we have a reputation. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak during this public hearing? Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Nora Reynolds, and I live at 14 North High. And as like people said, I just have some concerns. And like everyone has said, I'm 21 years old, I live alone with my six other roommates, we're all girls. And like our landlord had sent out, every girl he had sent an email telling us, "Come to this meeting," 100 girls live on our street, live in the street behind us. And my parents have a lot of concerns for this. I mean, I pay a lot of money to rent our house, I want to feel safe. And I have sympathy for people who are struggling with addiction and need places to go, but I just have some questions about, like, if something happens, who is held accountable for that? Who is paying for the security, is there security all the time? What if something, what if something happens, or are there going to be police on standby? Are people going to come and help if something goes wrong? Are they just going to blow it off because those people are struggling with addiction, so they're going to blame it on that and not an actual issue that's happening? And like, are there going to be cameras? How much are those people getting paid to sit there, like, if there are security? Are they just going to, like, not pay attention and just not do their job because they're being paid, like, less money? And are there curfews, check-ins? There's just a lot of concerns we have, and I know people say that college students are more of an issue than homeless people, but as a young girl, I still have concerns with people. I mean, I walk home alone at night all the time, I work at a bar, I'm walking home alone at night all the time. I get scared walking home alone, I walk right next to that parking lot, and at 3:00 a.m. when I'm walking home alone, I would be scared if I look over and there's people I didn't know. I don't know what they have going on in their life, if they're still struggling, if they're still addicted. I just don't want something to happen, and there's not some sort of, some way to, like, people not, someone, like, there won't be someone, like, held accountable, like, someone will do something. Sorry.
Hi, my name's Andy Vogt. I live out in the county, however, I own a business in town. I just have a couple, first things first, I wanted to say, our community is better with the Gathering Place. What they do and what we've heard that they've done is definitely a valuable asset to our community, nobody doubts that. Is the idea of having three covered wagons in a parking lot a cure for what the problem is? Maybe in time, maybe a little bit, but Good Works is not at capacity. It is not. Good Works is run by two of the most ethical people in our whole county, Darlene and Keith Wasserman. Secondly, we have a large project being opened up on Columbus Road where I think we've got 80 bedrooms coming into service. Why is it so necessary that we have three more huts put into this place? Another thing, our law director has basically said this is not a good idea, and it is not. been blown off as just her opinion. I don't know about you, but I've hired an attorney in the past and not followed those things, and I've paid the price. It's just not a good idea. Now, again, I do want to reiterate that the folks at The Gathering Place are offering a valuable, excuse me, service to our community. On February 9th of 2026, I will celebrate 20 years of sobriety. So I know what it's like to take full responsibility. Oh, thank you. I know what it's like to take responsibility for your actions. I know what it's like to sacrifice what you want to do for what is the best thing to do. And I'm asking you guys the same thing here. Is three bedrooms and covered wagons really going to make the difference that we need when we know we got 80 bedrooms coming up and when we have a known homeless shelter that is not at capacity? Secondly, I want to thank you women for coming here today. It took a lot of strength to get up here and talk, and I'm proud of each and every one of you. It's not easy. It's not easy. And I want to also thank you guys for your time for this opportunity to speak. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Hello, some of you I know. My name is Kristen Walz, and I'm a licensed independent social worker. I work in the City of Athens. I live in the county on Mill Creek Road. Sorry, a little nervous, I wasn't prepared. I will say that the people I serve, which many of them are members of The Gathering Place, three bedrooms is three people who aren't living under bridge. It's three people that you don't cross on the street when you're walking home. It's three people who have a safe place. Three people who have services. They have a case manager. They might have a therapist. It's three families who may not live in Athens but know that the people that they love are housed for the night. It's not long-term solution, but it's three beds for three people. And that's important. We have this great shelter that's going to be opening up, that people keep referencing. That isn't opening up right now. It's got a lot of work to go. So we have a lot of people who are going to be unhoused. I work with people daily who are unhoused, and it's heartbreaking. And the staff that I supervise come, and they're like, "Why can't we do something? Something has to be done." There are not enough churches in this county to pay for people to be in a hotel room who need a place to be. I have people who wear everything that they own on their back every day. That's a lot when it's 100 degrees out. It isn't enough when it's zero. I worked with survivors of sexual assault and domestic violence for seven years for the university. Some of you know that. Not once did I work with somebody who had a perpetrator of that violence who was unhoused. The vast majority of them were students. I think we need to look at this and realize that we come from a place of privilege. We're housed. It's really easy to say, "Well, just wait until the place on Columbus Road opens up." Tell those three people who are going to be freezing, or those three people who have to find their way to the old firehouse. It's a lot. I worked there this winter with Eric and Ginger and Autumn, and it was beautiful, and the people were thankful. And the community members that came in and set up beds and brought food were thankful to have the opportunity to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone additional who would like to speak? Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Sam Redfern. I've been a lifelong Athens, Ohio resident. I went to Ohio University, I work here, I live here. And, you know, I'm really excited about this Columbus Road development. It's not 80 beds, it's 41, and it's not built yet. Three people in these huts are three people off the street, three people who can be safe and warm and have a locked door between them and the outside. And that's three people who won't be on a street corner potentially just sitting there and making people uncomfortable as they walk. Housing is a real issue here in Athens. We walk down the street and we see people. We may try and avoid that, we may try and ignore that, but they're here. Unhoused people are here, and until there are methods for people to find housing, and they're going to be unhoused, and we have to create pathways for them to go from being unhoused to becoming citizens of Athens, Ohio, who can pay taxes. You know, if you have a place to stay today, you're going to be paying taxes tomorrow. Do we want these people to be business owners, taxpayers, in a year, or do we want them to be unhoused in a year? That's the question. I want them to be community members, I want them to be neighbors. I don't want them to be left out in the cold. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Pappy. I live in North Congress Street, ex-city councilperson. Last time I saw this place is filled was the last time we had a conversation about homelessness. The mayor probably remembers that, and Ms. Walker. All I want to say is, it takes a lot of broad shoulders to be a councilperson and to listen to all the community. And I'm hoping you have the broad shoulders to support the Conestoga Huts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ava Justino, and I'm a student here at Ohio University. This is a very important issue to me. I'm a sociology/criminology major, so in the past three years, I've done a lot of research projects and things on this issue of homelessness, addiction, mental health issues and such. I do just want to say, I do hold a lot of compassion in my heart for these individuals who are facing these struggles, especially in the community of Athens. I was an intern at the CASA program last semester, and I saw firsthand, really, the impacts that addiction and housing have on these individuals. But I think that getting to the root cause of this issue, instead of putting a Band-Aid on it, is something that I hold really close. I live with multiple of these ladies standing right here, and walking home alone for me can be very scary at times. And I'm sure a lot of the other women in this room have felt those same insecurities as well. As a woman living in this day and age, it can be extremely terrifying when you're walking home alone anytime. Going anywhere alone is terrifying sometimes. When you don't know your surroundings, you don't know who you're with, you don't know who's around. So I just wanted to make that point. I don't want to feel unsafe in this community. I came to Ohio University because of the safety and how safe I felt here. And if there are people around that I'm not really sure are living right directly in my backyard, that just might make me feel a little bit unsafe. So, thank you all for listening, and I really do want to thank everyone coming here tonight and sharing all your opinions because I think this is a very important issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Josie. I also live at 15th North High with all these girls and some of them that live behind us directly, like, we share backyards together. I just wanted to show that there's power in numbers and that we're all just concerned about the safety of all of us. And I think there's a lot of concern about what we don't know and a lot of, like, fear about the unknown, like, what would happen if the three rooms or huts were filled. We're just scared of what might happen. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm sorry, I'd like to speak again real quick. This is...
So, I'm sorry, we can, we only allow once. Although, I will let everybody know that this is coming up for a first reading during our regular council session. So, anyone, Mr. Stauffer has already mentioned this, that would like to stay and speak, there will be another opportunity at that point.
I'm not a lifelong resident of Athens, but I did commit to moving down here and becoming part of the community a little over three years ago when I went to Hocking College. I'm also nervous. I live at 23 Elliott Street and intend to stay here for a while. I'm nervous because I didn't intend to talk, but I was very moved by different things that people said tonight. And so some of the things that I've been thinking about are that the comment of, like, only three people, or like, that it's not worth it to help three people. There's two things about that. Number one, the situation really is truly that dire. It is that dire. People would give anything to, like, sleep on a bathroom floor. It is that dire. Also, it's not just three people. It's three people for a minute, but then a new crew comes in. Like, people are moved up and on through the system. This is not permanent housing for three people. They're not going to live there for a year. This is a temporary part, helping to funnel people back through a system. I also want to point out that I think law enforcement should be offended by the fears that these ladies have expressed. I think that anyone in this room who is invested in the safety of other people, especially, like, protecting young women, should be offended that these women feel so unsafe and so at risk. I think that protection as a word is really coming out here. So it's like, protection of other community members by letting three people sleep there. Like, there are so many eyes on those huts. People are watching those huts. People don't want stuff to happen there. People don't want, like, big chaos happening there because they don't want to get kicked out. Like, there are eyes, there are people in this room. Like, when you say that you're scared about people being in those huts, you are telling people in this room that you don't trust them to keep you safe. You are telling people in this room that they are not super protective people who are going to, like, join together and, like, protect one another. So I think this is a yes-and situation in which we have, yes, protect some people, add three more huts, when there's like a waiting list of 300 who would probably be willing to live in that hut, including me. I am very biased. I was at one point without stable housing, and that has come up a few times in my life. So I do know from personal experience how dire it is, and from the Emergency Warming Shelter, how dire it is in this county and with our community members. I have seen people lose housing because of medical issues, miss a paycheck, miss a payment, it spirals down from there. It is our community members. So I hope that the people in this room who are scared do have people that step up and protect them, and that there are systems in place to help them protect. And as a last note, feelings of unsafety are not more important than actual safety issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're nearing our last call. For anyone in the hallway or in the room who would like to address counsel on this issue during this public hearing. I really appreciate the community coming out. It's very important that we hear all voices, and I want to thank you all. I will note that this will be the end of the public hearing, and we're going to take five minutes to allow anybody who is not staying for the regular council meeting to leave the room and work their way out safely. And so we will begin our city council meeting at 8:22. Thank you. Call the end of the public hearing. Okay, thank you very much. We are now going to start our regular session of city council. It's Monday, August, excuse me, October 20th, '25, and we are in regular session tonight. Excuse me, may I have the attention? Thank you. I'd like to start that by acknowledging that here in Athens County, we live and work on land initially settled and developed by earlier people, particularly the Shawnee and the Osage, and those identified through cultures commonly known as the Adena, Hopewell, and Fort Ancient. This acknowledgement reminds us of the importance of honoring history, people, and the planet as we work to improve our city's legacy. I want to thank Member McCary for speaking about this statement, particularly right around Indigenous Peoples' Day. Our first order of business is to establish quorum. We have all members of council here with us tonight, which is wonderful. And so we have quorum. And then the next item is a disposition of minutes. May I have a motion to accept the regular session of council minutes held October 6, 2025, please?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions about these minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The regular session of council minutes held October 6, 2025 are approved. We now have communications. And I want to start by letting the public know, both here in the room as well as online, that we received a lot of communications, particularly about the issue of the public hearing that we just experienced. And we will be having a first reading, as I mentioned, of this ordinance this evening. There is some question as to whether city council will read publicly into the record every communication that it receives. This is not a requirement by the Ohio Revised Code. It is not a requirement in council rules for us to read into the record any communication that we receive. You might imagine, and I'm afraid I have to share, that we don't always receive letters that I would read publicly. They often, they sometimes contain language or derogatory comments or name-calling, and it would not be appropriate to read that into the record. And sometimes we receive communications that are very, very lengthy. And if we were to spend the time to read all of these into the record, we wouldn't be able to do our normal business. So what I have told council members is that if they have individual communications, they will each have the ability to share any communications, to read into the record, then they are welcome to do so. They might choose to read an entire communication into the record. They might choose to read a portion of a communication into the record. And they might also just choose to say, I received this many emails that were generally saying this and this many that were generally saying that, so the public has a sense of some of these communications. On that note, I am going to note that on a completely different issue, I received a communication from a citizen who is not able to be here tonight. And so he in particular asked me to communicate this to the public and really to our cities, to our city. And this is from Cody Sigmund. And he wrote that he believes it's fair for the citizens of Athens to receive, and I quote, "thoughtful, planful road construction timing that supports businesses and citizens rather than actively making things harder for them. And two, proactive communication about in-progress road construction and its impacts, as well as how they can access businesses impacted by the construction." And I just note that Mr. Sigmund was concerned about numerous transportation and communications issues, not just with the city of Athens, but with the Ohio Department of Transportation's, with projects outside of the city limits and in the region in general. So that sort of ask from him really goes out to many entities in the area. Do other council members have any communications that they would like to share this evening? Member McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. I am going to read one, or at least a portion of one, from Stephanie Hunter, a member of the pedestrian accessibility and bicycle task force that the city has. And I believe it's sufficient to say that this was a result of a motion and a discussion and a vote by members of that task force to request assistance from the administration for improved pedestrian safety regulations for Halloween. And we may have some individuals here who end up speaking further to that, but I know our administration is aware of that and will be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, Member McCary. Other members of council, any communications? Seeing none, we now turn to reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor, anything to communicate this evening?
A couple of things. I think everyone is well aware that, as usual, when I say usual, it wasn't necessarily the case in the past, but neighborhood trick-or-treating is coming up. It will be October 31st again this year, which is Halloween, which is when it should take place. I will also mention that with the trick-or-treating, the city has put out numerous guidelines for how to make it safe and effective and whatnot. We have the Near East Neighborhood, we have the Far East Neighborhood, we have the South Side Neighborhood, we have the West Side Neighborhood. We have a lot of trick-or-treating that's taking place all over the place. I would encourage parents with individuals under the age of 12 that need to be accompanied to make sure that when individuals are trick-or-treating and transitioning from one side of the street to the other, to help make sure that they get across safely. It takes a village to protect everyone. So encouraging everyone to do that. On the point of announcements, when it comes to the street closures and whatnot, it is timely. So therefore, I will mention that on October 24th, between the hours of 2:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., the Stimson Avenue Bridge will be completely shut down for that period of time to pour the second half of the concrete decking, which is great because once that's done and it's cured, and the crash rails go up, that's concrete as well. So that's work that has to take place further on that street. We're looking at hopefully putting this project to bed, you know, in the not-too-distant future. And by that I mean this year, that we will have Stimson Avenue Bridge back open again. But to pour that decking, the entire bridge does need to be shut down from 2:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. on the 24th of October. So please plan accordingly in terms of being able to come down the Stimson Avenue corridor, if that's what you do, take an alternative route, take the Richmond Avenue Bridge, take the East State Street, whatever. We all know how the city works and it's manageable. But again, since you brought up the issue of challenges at times of getting the information out, one of the big challenges that I acknowledge first and foremost is that it's difficult for any municipality to hit all the different ways in which people consume their information. I would be remiss not to sit there and say, we have two great products in the city of Athens that you can use. Number one, you can use the Athens, Ohio City Source app and get information that is provided to the city, but also alerts. The website is another one, but the third one is Nixle. Nixle is a product that again is easy to find, easy to download, it's free, as is the Athens, Ohio City Source app. That is free as well. You can find that at Google Play or the Apple App Store. And then the Nixle you can get at, I'm blanking on what the number is, but we'll get it out. And for anyone who ever pays attention to my weekly update with the mayor and Kyle Johansson, who's my favorite weather reporter in the city of Athens, we talk about those two products all the time. Those are ways in which you can keep yourself informed as to what's happening when we're talking about street maintenance, road closures, if they're necessary, and things of that type. Thank you, President Crowell.
Thank you. Mr. Townley, anything from the Law and Directors Office?
Nothing from the Law and Directors Office.
Thank you for being here. Okay, we will now move on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 85-25 is an ordinance amending certain sections of the Athens City Code Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter 9.12, Streets and Sidewalks, Section 9.12.18, Materials on Street or Sidewalk, introduced by Councilmember Spianis.
Thank you, President Crowell. So this one has been talked about quite a bit. This is the third reading, so this is where we make the decision. And this, we've changed wording on this based on, you know, new ideas of how to make this easier. So I'm going to read the new sections. That's G, no dumpsters, moving pods, or construction trailers may be set on sidewalks or public streets without first being permitted by the Service Safety Director or their designee. The fees for said permits shall be established by separate ordinance. And then H, no temporary closure of any street alley or sidewalk may be allowed unless permitted by the Service Safety Director or their designee. Any temporary closure request shall include a pedestrian and vehicle maintenance of traffic plan and follow the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Sidewalks closed for extended periods must be appropriately barricaded and signed. Alternate passageways may be required. Special event street closures are not regulated by this section. The fee for the temporary closure of any street alley or sidewalk per day shall be established by separate ordinance. So I move that we pass this ordinance, this proposed ordinance.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Are there any comments or questions? Mayor, you're our only elected official here tonight, I guess. Anything to comment or add? Okay, audience members, anything to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 96-25 is an ordinance amending the 2025 Appropriation Ordinance 115-24, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. This is an item that we've heard on multiple occasions annually from our partners with the Athens County Public Libraries, and it is a request, this is legislation authorizing support for the Imagination Library project that will benefit children in our city. This would be at a price tag of $10,000, and it's coming from our general fund. So I think it's important to recognize that our mayor has offered his support for this despite the challenges that our budget faces and that this is an important community value with an important impact. And I believe with that, I would rest. Do we need to hear from others first? Okay, a motion to adopt 96-25.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any comments or questions on this ordinance? Yes, Member Wood.
Second, Micah's motion for rest.
You may. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Member Swank.
Mr. Tepe, I have to apologize. My youngest granddaughter just got her most recent book and I left it on the kitchen table. But thank you for sorting the program. This is obviously one I think all the members of council stand firmly behind, as well as the administration.
Mr. Mayor, anything to add? Audience members, anything about this ordinance, please? Mr. Tepe, thanks for being here.
And this time I am speaking as the Director of Athens County Public Library to extend my thanks, particularly to Member Swank for your persistence in making sure that we secure this funding. This is a great benefit to the Imagination Library in Athens County, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other audience members? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for second reading. I will read the title and then check to see if there are any comments or questions. Ordinance 100-25 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a pre-annexation agreement with the Athens County Commissioners, introduced by Councilmember Ordinance 101-25 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts for construction of a new waterline along Jacob Street from Graham to Stony Brook, Project Number 386, introduced by Councilmember Ordinance 103-25 is an ordinance establishing Title 29 Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.37, Unoccupied and Vacant Property Registration, introduced by Councilmember Swank. Yes, Member Swank?
This is a wonderful proposal that's being advanced from our Assistant Service Safety Director, Andrew Chicky. And it's gotten to this point very quickly. But in reading through this over the weekend, there's a section under exemptions that I have a bit of a concern about. This is Section 29.37.07, exemptions, letter C. And the way it reads, it says, "A property that is for sale and listed with a licensed state of Ohio Realtor shall be exempted for a period of 12 months from the start of vacancy, provided that the owner submits proof of such listing and for-sale status." As this is written, it would preclude a sale by owner from getting an exemption. Now granted, there are some people that need a Realtor to sell properties, but there are many others who do not. And I'm just wondering if we need some wording along the lines of if someone was selling it on their own with an approved sales plan, a plan that would be approved by, I guess it's the Code Office is cited throughout this. But it kind of forces people into a real estate relationship. And for every $100,000 of value, that's $6,000 more they have to charge for the property than they hope to net. For example, if you had a $300,000 property and you wanted to sell for $300,000, if you listed with a Realtor, you'd have to list that for $318,000, which further drives up the cost of housing in the city. So I throw that out for your consideration if it's something that council feels might be in order, then we would need to amend Section C of this.
Thank you for that comment, Member Swank. Any additional comments on Member Swank's point about under exemptions, C? Yes, Members Spianis?
Yeah, I hear your point. I think this is one of those things, though, that could be, you know, as I've talked about with Deputy Safety Director Chicky, that you could say, well, you know, this is an exemption, an exception because I want to do it this way instead. I don't know that we need to change the wording. I guess I could ask our representative from the Law Director's Office if you feel that's necessary.
At this point, I would feel more comfortable consulting with the Law Director and we can get an opinion to council.
Thank you, Mr. Townley. I'm sure, yeah, Mr. Swank?
My concern with that is if we do that, this will come up for third reading on November the 3rd. And if we do amend it, that knocks it back to first reading, which means we wouldn't be approving this until December. And that's getting real tight to the end of the session, and I think the Assistant Service Safety Director would like to have this in place for the 2026, I was going to say school year, for the 2026 calendar year.
Yeah.
To your point, Member Spianis, I went through this looking for a place that that could be covered, and I couldn't find it. that could be covered, and I couldn't find it in terms of general exemptions. Now, where I'm thinking just for, um, uh, a property is for sale and listed with a licensed state of, state of Ohio Realtor or has an approved sales plan, shall be exempted, something
Yeah, Member Thomas?
I would think adding some language like that at the end would probably cover, just that there's an approved plan or the plan has been filed with the Code Office. Yeah.
I think the mayor has a comment.
I, I agree wholeheartedly with, with, what you're saying, Councilmember Swank. I mean, I, I know, I know the 3% and what that looks like when you have a Realtor working with you as opposed to, that happens a lot in the city of Athens where individuals would be for sale by owner. So I think it's appropriate to put that in there, um, because it, it would capture all. And if it's a simple amendment like that to keep this piece of legislation on track, I support it.
Member Thomas, what you said, I think nailed it. Can you, can you give us the verbiage for that? I don't mean to put you on the spot with what you said.
Immediate, immediate, remembering. Yeah. We can, we can, I think, um, just adding to the end that, uh, a sale plan must be filed with the Code Office to avoid, uh, or to be qualified for exemption.
So, okay, well, this word, a property that is for sale and listed with a licensed state of Ohio Realtor or has a Code Office-approved sales plan.
Yeah.
For sale by owner.
For sale by owner, yes.
Yeah.
So I would so move that what we just said, and we'll defer, so I, I would move that the, Section C reads, "A property that is for sale and listed with a licensed sales, licensed state of Ohio Realtor or has an approved sale by on, an approved plan with the Code Office for sale by owner." Be exempted for a period of 12 months for da-da-da-da, rest of that. I'd so move.
Uh, Member Wood?
I, I support changing it. Is the verbiage "sale plan" a defined term? I've never heard of that before.
And you're in the retail sales business.
This is my concern is, um, what the Code Office would recommend in terms of the language for this inclusion. Maybe I'll ask the city administration again. Yes, we would like this legislation to be approved on a regular schedule. Is there something timely that, um, would cause a problem if this was not January 1st, 2026? I'm wondering just how we should make this amendment, whether we should talk to the Code Office, talk to Mr. Chicky and find out what his intention is?
Can I?
Or we should make this amendment here?
Can I make another suggestion?
Which maybe have to be amended again. Members Spillness?
Okay, if we just said, "A property that is for sale" "shall be exempted for a period of 12 months from the start of vacancy, provided that the owner submits proof of listing and for-sale status," then they can have, do it either way.
That's.
Members Swank?
Yeah, that, that nails it.
I, I'm curious as to why Mr. Chicky included a licensed state of Ohio Realtor, and I'm guessing he had a reason for that, but I'm comfortable with this language being proposed. Mayor?
Likely because, uh, Director Chicky is, is pulling this from what other municipalities are doing.
Yes.
And it's probably language that was in there. Councilmember Spillness, I, I like the language you just put forward. It captures all. It, it, you know, if someone is selling the house, whether it's through a Realtor or by sale from owner.
Right. I think if we just do that, we're done.
So we would, so I would withdraw that original motion and make it, make it read, "A property that is for sale shall be exempted for a period of 12 months from the start of vacancy, provided that the owner submits proof of such listing and for-sale status." What we're basically doing is crossing out "and listed with a licensed state of Ohio Realtor."
Yes.
One.
Yes, Member?
That, that sparks one question, uh, at least for me. Um, if we remove the part, and I am totally in favor of deleting the part that says "listed with a licensed state of Ohio Realtor," but then the later wording of "such listing" doesn't make sense. So that may need a little word spitting.
A sale by owner can, is, it would, that is a listing.
Yeah.
Yes, it's a listing.
And even if you're doing for sale by owner, you probably have it on Facebook or something.
All over the place, yeah.
There's all, there's all kinds of options there.
All right, fair enough.
But that's part of making a plan.
Okay, we have a motion to amend, um, this ordinance with the langu, with, by striking the language that the clerk, I'm certain, has recorded. Uh, is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the amendment on the table? Mayor, anything to add? Audience, anything to add on this amendment?
Yeah, just Kent Magus, 34 West Washington. I'm just wondering if, what the state of Ohio Realtor has to do with it? Are there specific extra, like taxes or funds or fees? You know, maybe that has, is something where, you know, they don't want people from out of, you know, like, people in Florida buying up a whole bunch of properties here. It has to be listed with the local, you know, somebody related to the community because there is a lot of instances that I, you know, heard of where people out of the country, people out of the city, people out of the state are buying up lots and lots of property and doing developments and things like that without, you know, the community's involvement. So maybe that's something that.
Thank, thank you for that point.
Wouldn't make any difference.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of amending this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Ordinance 104 dash 25 is an ordinance amending Title IX Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.37, Definitions, introduced by Councilmember Swank. Ordinance 105 dash 25 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I, General Convisions, Chapter 1.03, code fees established to include Section 29.37.06, introduced by Councilmember Swank. Member Swank?
Uh, the second thing that I came across was Section 293706, fees. And what I can't get my head around is why the fees for vacant commercial properties are double what they are for residential properties. And as an example, I will use my colleague to my left, Member Wood. Uh, if his house sat vacant, the first year would cost him $300. If his record store sat empty, it would cost him $600. Why double the price for businesses?
Members Spillness?
Yeah, I think that there is a, um, I think this is based on, as the mayor pointed out, what you see in other communities. And, um, I know I, I ran this by the Westside Community Association. They said, oh, I don't think those fees are high enough. So I don't see a problem with having residential be lower than commercial. I mean, it's a money-making business. That's different than, you know, trying to deal with your own home.
Members Swank? Member Thomas, do you have something to say? Please.
I, yeah, I would say the same thing as what Member Spillness was saying, and also that generally a commercial property, it might be larger and it's going to have higher rents, maybe just keep it, get more tied to, to that. Commercial stuff generally goes, has higher fees, higher penalties, rent, everything.
Mm-hmm. Member Swank?
I, I just can't justify it. I, I mean, I, I don't know what the philosoph, economic philosophical reasoning for it is, and, and I could use, I chose not to use your property because he's sitting next to me, but the same thing, your, your business would pay double what your home does. And I, I just, there's no logic to it in my mind.
Please.
I can kind of understand that, but I can also say that looking around town, we have commercial properties that sit empty for long periods of time for rent that's just outrageous. And it prohibits people from opening a business, uh, you know? We have more people come to town when the people think the city is anti-business. Landlords are anti-business in Athens. It costs way more money to rent here than a lot of other places in comparison to the number of months you have for business available. So if there's a way to motivate them to have a reasonable rent that makes sense for a business plan versus letting it sit empty just because they own the property and it's no loss to them, um, I think a higher fee is going to motivate them a little bit more.
Member Wood?
Yeah, I think, um, to that point, my record store makes more money than my house, luckily.
Glad to hear that.
Not much. Uh, and, and so there's, yeah, there's more urgency around it. I think the, so they brought up the example of the bait shop a couple of times. It's been empty forever. Uh, the, the community cost is higher, and I think that it, it just makes sense. Um, also, the, there's a higher demand for residential property than business, businesses. So there's lots of a sort of, uh, if my landlord decided to leave my building empty, um, that would be, uh, less harmful to them or less likely than them leaving the apartments upstairs empty because there's way more demand for them. So people are going to fill them anyway.
I think another point to this is, it's not just about the value of the property and the taxes or whatever. It's also, commercial and industrial property translates into jobs, and we want more jobs as well as for, you know, the business and the residential.
Members Swank?
I guess I would have a, a question for our acting law director this evening. Granted, there are two different classes of property. One's residential and one is, uh, commercial. From your experience, and you may not know the answer to this today, but in the eyes of the law, and this, this was brought to me by a couple of business owners, full transparency. In the eyes of the law, um, would this be discriminatory, discriminatory practice?
As long as the government and council can provide a rational basis, such as what council, uh, Member Thompson did, you can justify, as long as you can justify it under the rational basis test, then, for instance, keeping the businesses open, you know, promoting those, and what Members Spillness said, I think you could justify it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this ordinance? Let's see, we are at 106. Ordinance 106 dash 25, an ordinance establishing a do-not-knock registration program through the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, introduced by Councilmember Swank. Ordinance 107 dash 25 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title XI, Business Regulations, Chapter 11.04, Vending, Peddling and Soliciting, Section 11.04.17, Presspassing of Peddlers or Solicitors, introduced by Councilmember Swank. Ordinance 110 dash 25 is an ordinance, ordinance establishing a cybersecurity policy for the city of Athens, introduced by all members of council. Okay, we now move on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 112 dash 25 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title XXIII, Zoning, Chapter 23.04, Permitted Uses, to allow temporary shelters as a permitted use in an R3 residential zone at 1, 5 and 7 North Congress Street, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
You'll bear with me one second, lot to scroll through here to get to 112. Cybersecurity policy is pretty long. Okay, um, let me read the, uh, the, the, the meat of this. Uh, this is A, principal permitted uses, temporary housing, shelters, 1, 5 and 7 Congress, should be, in that North Congress Street? Anyway, Congress Street, commonly known as the gathering place owned by Athens Mental Health Incorporated, housing structures of a temporary nature that are not affixed to the property and that do not contain kitchen or bathroom facilities. Biennial review, the use must be formally reviewed and renewed every two years by the Service Safety Director. Infrastructure limitation, no more than three temporary housing shelters may be installed per available sink and toilet located within 200 feet of the shelters. This approval may be revoked at any time by the Service Safety Director for serious safety or sanitation concerns. This approval shall cease upon transfer of the property to different ownership. Last month, we asked for a legal opinion from the law director about this, uh, in reference to this recommendation from the Planning Commission and a subsequent recommendation from the Planning Commission and the differences in requirements. In reading this, because this is a pilot project, uh, and it has been called a pilot project by the, the director of the gathering place, I would be a little more comfortable if we changed the review from every two years to one year. This is a pilot, one year, and that would address one of the issues that the law director brought up in terms of what might happen if the two approvals, assuming both do get approved, had different criteria. The two things she brought up is, one, this could be, uh, considered spot zoning and be taken to court, or it could be differential treatment and a possible citizen initiative. Uh, I would like to kind of head that possibility off or those possibilities off, and again, if we approve both of these, to make them consistent in their review and be simply changing one thing from biennial every two years, uh, to one year, particularly because it's a pilot project. Throw that out for the consideration of members of council.
Members Spillness?
Okay, so it's my understanding, just before we get in a conversation further with this, it's my understanding that because the Planning Commission already approved the language as-is, that if we want to make any changes, we have to have.
Supermajority.
Supermajority.
Yeah.
Right? So six out of seven, right? That's correct? Okay, so just so everybody knows that. Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments from city council? Member Swank?
Yeah, to that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Member Wood.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, it does seem like we should change 7 Congress and the two places to 7 North Congress as those are different places. Um, and that seems minor enough, but I think.
It's clerical.
Clerical?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you, Member Wood. Member Swank? Did you have something to add, Members Swank?
Oh, yes, to that end, that is, and one of the reasons that we're doing this tonight as opposed to two weeks ago, give opportunity for, um, Member Reisner to return to his, uh, to his rightful seat there, almost 12 years now, uh, to be a participating member in such a vote.
Oh, I flew back from Bangkok just for this vote.
So with that said, I would move that, uh, we change biennial review to annual review. The use must be formally reviewed and renewed every year by the Service Safety Director.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to amend, uh, this ordinance by changing biennial review to annual review. Any additional comments or questions from city council members on the amendment? City administration, anything to add on the amendment proposed?
Clerk of council, is that an administrative change from, from two to one? Well, I tried.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody in the, in the public would like to speak to this? Uh, please. Mr. Stauffer, just so you know, this is about the amendment on the table. So this is about changing from, from two to one year. We'll get to the next point in just a minute. Please stay with us. Thank you. On the amendment, anyone? Okay, um, all those in favor of amending the ordinance from biennial to annual?
Yes.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Member Swank, the ordinance has been amended. Um, it has been read for the first time, and we're now, um, um, back to this ordinance, having it been read for the first time. Any comments or additional questions on this ordinance? From city council, seeing none, from the mayor, anything additional? And now to the public. Mr. Stauffer, if you'd like to join us, please.
Um, I actually wanted to add something.
Oh, okay, that was why I asked. Go ahead.
Yes, I, I guess I didn't.
That's okay. Members Spillness?
I'm way down here, so.
I see ya.
Um, I just wanted to add, in addition to the comments being made, uh, earlier about this, I wanted to add that Kerry Pigman, the Executive Director of Athens County Foundation, again. again, wrote a support letter confirming her appreciation and confidence in the gathering place, and I'll quote, "This project is a thoughtful and practical step towards addressing the housing crisis in Athens. It will provide safety and dignity for individuals who are already part of our community and already served daily at the gathering place. The project has been carefully designed with input from local partners and with safeguards in place to ensure community confidence." I also wanted to emphasize that there was a repeated discussion about safety, and I just want to say, and pardon me for repeating this again, but I was a social work professor at Ohio University. My students volunteered at the gathering place for the entire time that I was working at OU for 13 years, and many of them worked, worked as volunteers and some went on to work there. Also, both my sons, who are now past that age, but they worked, they volunteered at the gathering place, and one of my sons worked there a total of four and a half years. So I got to know the various staff members, how things operate, you know, how the, how it functions, and, you know, I heard the stories from my son who worked there for four and a half years. So I have probably a better understanding than anybody on council, anyway, about the intimate workings of the gathering place. And I want to say emphatically that all that time, and now it's been 17 years since I've been in the city, I have never heard of any volunteer or anybody in my family or when I've been there that has had any violence issues or felt unsafe or assaulted or anything of the kind. And I want to emphasize again that people who have, are unhoused, especially those people who have mental illness, are much more likely to be the victim of crime than the perpetrator of crime. And as someone pointed out earlier, students are probably, women's students are probably more in danger of the male students in college than the people who are unhoused in our community. So I think it's really important that we take some solid steps to help folks. So I am very much in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, members Spillness, and I'll just say that we received, as I mentioned during the public hearing, numerous communications, both in support and, and against this, this initiative, and I personally won't be reading all of these communications into the record. They are public documents. Once, once they are received by city council, they're part of the public record, so they are available through Freedom of Information Act or anybody who would like to, to collect them. But that is all I have. Anything additional from city council? Okay. Mr. Stauffer, sorry for the delay. Your turn.
Before I step in, before that timer starts, I've watched a lot of city council meetings. I've missed a lot of city council meetings, but I know damn good and well that I've watched the president of council read letters to the, to the council, to the public, to the TV. All the folks that I communicated with, I said, send your letters to the clerk of council and they will be read into the record because I've seen it happen before. It did not happen tonight. All the folks that I contacted, they're in my camp, was laying up there, they didn't get read into the record. I don't think it's fair. I want to say that, and now I will address council. Jack Stauffer, Elmwood. Please listen with an open heart and mind and consider a common sense decision. This is about Athens, its citizens of all stripes, the working folks, the business folks, the OU students, their parents, our children, and visitors to our town, including the homeless. No one I've been working with or talking with doubts that the gathering place has been providing a needed service to some folks who needed guidance. That is not the point of this hearing. The point is, there needs to be a common sense approach to your consideration and decision for our town. My proposal seems to make sense. Please listen closely and ponder the possibilities. No huts on Congress Street. There are many locations in town that could accommodate these three huts only in town for one year or until the Sunset Motel opens and then the huts go away. Your proposed needs at the gathering place continue to be provided to the unfortunate, and we enjoy our downtown area as it now exists. I've spoken to the mayor and several council members, and I have suggested alternative sites that would be out of public view and give some sense of privacy to the folks in the huts, which they may appreciate. The fairground seems to be a logical possibility. I'm sure there are several or many possibilities on city property in green spaces or corners of parking lots that could provide privacy for these folks. If you choose to insist on Congress Street, then this appears that your intention is a political statement or a political stunt. Athens invites other homeless downtown. That's what it looks like. We can't solve homelessness in Ohio, but maybe with your thoughtful consideration, we can help the needy in Athens City and Athens County. Let our sweet little town remain our sweet little town. You don't have to put the homeless on display on Congress Street unless, unless that is your point and intention. Table this and give it further thorough consideration. Please let common sense and reason prevail. I will also reiterate the fact of what Mr. Swank made, that Ms. Eliason gave you some advice, and at least one member said, well, that's just an opinion. Most people that hire a lawyer follow their advice, and when they don't follow their advice, things don't go their way, and this indeed could be challenged.
Ken Lang is 34 West Washington. I, I just want to reiterate the fact and the things that were echoed by members of the council, like councilwoman Spillness of, you know, it's, it, this proposed site at the gathering place, there's cameras everywhere. It is a perfect spot for this program because immediate access to services is extremely important. Shoving people somewhere, you know, I lived under the Roundabout Bridge and, you know, until they put Porta-Jons up in the Dairy Barn, like the Dairy Lane Park, you know, it was quite a trek to be able to find any sort of a facility. And, you know, access to facilities is very, very important, and access to services is very important, but also as far as safety, you know, the, the place is monitored 24/7. I just want to quickly read what I posted on Facebook as a response to some of the misinformation that's going around, and I'm, I can be found on Facebook. I'm, you know, I'm not trying to hide. As always, if anyone has any questions whatsoever, please reach out to me, or better yet, come over to the gathering place anytime during their operating hours and see for yourself what this wonderful and essential part of our community for almost 50 years is all about. I volunteered there when I was in high school, and I am still playing the same piano there today. It's in the same spot. It's awesome. There is no place for the sensationalism, fear mongering, and misinformation that is being spread about this project or this amazing organization that has done and continues to do so much for the Athens community, period. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to this?
Aaron Thomas, 28 Avon Place. So I really only came to listen in on everything that's going on. Been following the council meeting, all the readings on this for the past few months, reading all the good information and misinformation on Facebook and other social pages, and I come here wearing multiple hats as a community member, as a business owner, as a member of the Board of Zoning of Appeals. So this opinion is my personal opinion. I, three houses is better than no houses. You know, I, I'm very disappointed in some of the people that believe addiction is the reason for people homelessness. I've had family members and friends who have been homeless and not been addicted to drugs, so I'm disappointed when people say, you know, the people living in these houses would be drug addicts or recovering addicts. So that as a community aspect. Now, on the other side of it, a lot of support has come from this, and I love the support from the county, but one of these things, I feel sometimes people show support for things that's not in their backyards, you know, and it's one of these things, oh yeah, this is great, long as you don't put it in my backyard. So when I hear people speaking outside the county, outside the city, I support that. I support the opinion, but, you know, put yourself in that situation, can this happen in your backyard? Which takes me to my final as, as a member of the Board of Zoning of Appeals, and I think if this do get passed, the law really need to be very tight because before I was a member of the Board of Zoning of Appeals, city of Athens lost a few hundred thousand dollars to a court case. As a member of Zoning of Appeals, we have dealt with the BNB problem in Athens for a decade to three, three and a half years ago, when city council finally passed a resolution that didn't come to our desk, asked the BZA on the BNB, which you all can read the statements, and we still have people coming in about BNBs, which we did have a lawsuit against us last year that was dropped over a BNB. So this is something, looking at all aspects, as a community member, as a business owner, as somebody, a part of the city, I have volunteered my time for the last 20 years to make sure Athens stays a community. And my whole thing is that, once again, I respect people's opinions, but, you know, once again, could this be in your backyard, and will you allow this to be in your backyard? I commend the ladies that came up and spoke from Congress and high because this is in their backyard. I live on the Far East Side, it's not in my backyard, but I have been through Sales Park and have seen encampments. I have rode my bike down the bike path. Homeless, you cannot hide it, I'm sorry. It's here, you can't hide it. You can help, temporary, with the three housing, with what's going on on Columbus Road, but I'm just looking at all aspects, and I want you all to look at that as, as a board, as a council member, from the legal side and the community side, so we don't have a repeat of what happened 10 years ago for those who've been around long enough. Thank you.
Any additional comments from the public on this ordinance, please?
I am a member, I do live on North Congress Street, not right next door to them, but I've been a North Congress Street resident for 35 years. The only time I've had any problems with anybody, it's been students. And even one year, many years ago, one of my house guests was here for Halloween. She went back to the house, just three blocks from downtown, and the streets were crowded with people, and when I walked, by the time I got home, she was running down the middle of the street. Somebody, somebody had followed her home, stalked her, they arranged three exits out of my house, right up here on North Congress Street, and it was a student. I mean, fortunately, my friend, she was a lieutenant in the, in the Navy, she was able to take care of herself, and this guy put his tail between his legs and ran down the street. But there's 200 people out in the streets, so there's no way to deal with that person, to identify them. But again, to reiterate, I have never, ever, I, and I've worked with crisis intervention, I've been a survivor advocate, I used to run the crisis, you know, programs at, at the hotlines and things at Tri-City Mental Health. I've been a survivor advocate off and on for years. You know, it is not, it is not the homeless people that we have to worry about. That's why I, I just encourage you all to support this effort. I've worked with the gathering place off and on for years, and it's only been good things, and everything I've read, they have this set up, and it's not going to be a problem. And it's certainly not going to be an ICE war, and there's, there's going to be security, and I just think this is what we need. So thank you very much.
Any additional comments from the public on this ordinance?
This is the last time ever anyone will be up talking.
No, this is the first reading, so there'll be second reading and third reading. Come on back. Tonight's, yes.
Nick Tepey, 1L, speaking as a private citizen. I wanted to just briefly touch on a couple of the things that were raised earlier. The primary reason why the location that has been selected makes sense is because services are available there. A gentleman earlier suggested the public library parking lot is an option. If I was able to pay my staff to be available in the way that the gathering place folks are available, sure, but I can't. Talking about in my backyard, I'd be more than happy to have the Conestoga Huts in my backyard if I was able to provide 24/7 services. I can't. Part of the reason for this to be located where it is, is the services that are available. I would like to see there be more opportunities like this at other places where services are available, but this is something that we can act on right now that will make the situation at least a little bit better and provide people with a path forward out of the situation they're living in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Because the majority, Ginger Farm, South North Congress Street, Williams Road, Chay O'Ha, because I'm, I'm just listening to all the different themes, and most of the themes I'm really hearing is there's this fear, they're fearful of these Conestoga Huts there, but no one's saying what they're fearful of. What are they fearful of? Are they afraid that someone's going to jump out and rape them? I mean, because that, you just need to say it, that's the case, because what are you afraid of? I do know that I'm always shocked when I put on the cameras on weekends, like what's going on in the neighborhoods, and I know a lot of landlords encourage their tenants to maybe feel a certain way. But I guess what I'm seeing is, so what's been said is, who's supervising them? Who's monitoring them? My question is, who is monitoring, supervising the students? Because we're monitoring them, and it is shocking what one might see. You know, if we want to talk about drug tests and drinking and crowded and people having open fires, that's what you can see on high and on North Congress. I'm, you know, I'm more fearful for our property damage, which, whenever there's no property damage, it's, and I don't want to say they're a student, they're a person that would be a student age. So I just think that's something we should all really think about, if we really think about the majority of damage that happens in our town, the urination, throwing up. I know when I walked down Court Street early, that's what I'm seeing. I'm seeing a lot of vomit. So I just think we should think about, because we're talking about, it's like people are not going to be in the gathering place drinking or doing drugs. People come there to be sober, and people have been, they've been fixated on addict, 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 and it's like, that's, people are in recovery, and that is not the majority of what we serve. And the gathering place started 50 years ago, serving those individuals that were former patients from mental health and community members, and that's what we are. We are community. We are social community. And I just, I just really hope people can put aside their fears. We've made friends with our neighbors, the guys behind, because sometimes our residents at our recovery house, you know, they're seeing all this going on. We go and we talk about what we are, and then you see the change in our students. We have so many students that want to help build now. So I just think that everyone should hear that that's also a big side of this. Thanks.
Anyone else like to address counsel on this ordinance? Okay, thank you very much for your comments. We are now moving on to 113. Ordinance 113-25 is an ordinance rezoning portions of North Lancaster Street, 2nd Street, Columbia Avenue, and Columbus Road from zones R1 and B2D to zones R2, B1, and B2, introduced by councilmember Swank.
Oh, that was quick, didn't even have to ask for it. The planning commission, which is made up of the mayor, Amy Stone, Service Director, Chris Isley, former president of city council. Nysley, former President of City Council, who have got an alley lead rap, a realtor here in town, and there's one more person, who am I forgetting, Mr. Mayor?
The Chair.
John Kowalski. That's right, John Kowalski, former planner for Ohio University. Some discussion about rezoning this area. What is this? This is, you go up Lancaster Street, North Lancaster, Second Street, there's a little antique shop right turn the corner, you go, continue on through, you've got Columbus Road and out of town. Rezoning this entire area to make it more walkable, hopefully to encourage businesses, and make some rhyme or reason out of what we have here. The Planning Commission's recommendation was to zone all of this as you see it, this is a cemetery, that's what OS is, various zones, R2, B2, B1. And on this side, this entire area from the corner to where it turns into Columbia, except for those two properties to R2. We had several meetings, lots of people turned out, we had a meeting last week, some residents came and met with me behind this area, we had discussion, we talked with the city planners. And what this represents is the possible amendment to the Planning Commission's recommendation. Do all of this, but leave this as it is. R1, all these properties, and those two would stay as the B2. B1, I'm sorry, B1, the pink. All this will stay R1, those will stay as B1. What this does, gives us further time, further time to look into this, particularly how these buildings could be used, but also the environmental impact behind. If you go behind here, it's like dropping off a cliff. And all of you have been around here long enough to know, we've lost a house on a cliff not too far from here. The other thing this does, it allows us to proceed with the leasing of the fire station. And we need to get that taken care of as soon as possible, get some tenants or a tenant in there, make use of that property. So what I am proposing today is amending the Planning Commission's recommendation. Accept all of this, modify this, to leave it the way it is until we can take a further and deeper look at it. And I would offer that in the form of a motion, Mr. President.
So I'm unclear if this...
We would just exchange out the map.
Yeah, we don't need a motion to amend the Planning Commission's recommendation. The ordinance itself is this map. Is that correct, Clerk Walker?
It's still, it's still an amendment.
Still, it is an amendment.
Yes. We're amending the Planning Commission's map.
Okay. So I've been corrected, this does come forward as an amendment for, as part of this ordinance, we are amending the Planning Commission's map. City Council, any comments or questions on the amendment that Member Swank has proposed?
Second.
Sorry. Thank you. We have an amendment and a second. Yes, Members, be honest.
Based on the comments I've heard from people who have been very engaged with this, and talking to people on the west side where I represent, and other folks, I feel as though this change, this amendment, is just what we need to do, because there was a lot of concerns, and almost all of it basically was that portion. And I think there was some good reasons for being concerned about that portion remaining as it is until maybe down the road, we can figure out if that's the best way to go. But I think there's been a lot of good input, and that this will make the residents happy. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this? Mayor, anything to add?
I do have something to add.
Please.
I would like to first start by saying that the Planning Commission meeting, as we discussed, as you had indicated, Councilmember Swank, the R2 possibility along Lancaster slash Columbia. And I want to commend someone who's here tonight, who came to those meetings and suggested there being a small group to really look more closely at the suggested changes that we were proposing through the Planning Commission, and that would be a former council member, Michelle Pappy, and many others who were there as well. But the communications have been outstanding in terms of treating this as another opportunity to engage with our citizens on a level of importance such as this, because this would create, in theory, if you looked at what the map showed with the B2 and the B1, as well as now having this removed, I should have said on the front end, Councilmember Swank, that I'm supportive of retaining that southeast, whatever direction that is, of Lancaster and Columbia as it sits now. But this opens the opportunity for there to be kind of a small neighborhood commerce area. There's already, you know, a couple businesses that are in there that are basically noncompliant with what the current zoning is in this area. But I think it was very fruitful for everyone to come together and figure out how to best solve this, this interesting re-zoning of an area. I could see this being a model moving forward in looking at other such locations. I would, it was referenced earlier tonight, and that was Frank's Bait Shop. I think it would be wonderful in the future to see commerce down on the west side, along Central Avenue, because it used to exist in that part of the city, where Washington Street, State Street, and Schaefer was its own walkable little community when it came to getting the provisions that you needed. When we're sitting there striving as hard as we are to reduce our carbon footprint, when we're striving as hard as we are to make our city more engaging, welcoming, and accessible, something like this is perfect for that being a starting point to rethink how things should or could be in the city of Athens. So, the short of that is that that suggested amendment, I feel, is in alignment with what the Planning Commission initially brought forward, and is quite acceptable moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just one quick comment.
Yes, please.
Before we vote, I have to be full disclosure. If this passes, this is your ward, you take it from here.
Gee, thanks, Alan.
Members of the public, anything to add on this proposed amendment on the table?
I just want to say that I think we'd be remiss if we didn't thank Megan Jennings, our planner, for the really hard work she did to bring this to the community and have some conversation and lead the discussion. I thought that was really a model for how things ought to be in the future. So, thanks to Megan.
Thank you, Members of the public. Okay, all those in favor of this amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Member Swank, the ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Ordinance 114-25 is an ordinance amending the 2025 appropriation ordinance, 115-24, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. This has been discussed at committee and is a $35,000 expense to replace the controls for our HVAC at the community center.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council members? City administration, HVAC, members of the public? Thank you. That has been read for the first time. Ordinance 115-25 is an ordinance declaring property located at 25 Central Avenue, no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and authorizing the mayor to sell said property to another political subdivision, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. I'll begin, since you already said a great deal of important information, with Section 3. The purchase agreement shall include as part of the sale the following. Should Athens Metropolitan Housing Authority, its successors, or signs wish to sell the property, the City of Athens shall have the right to first refusal for purchase at fair market value. Section 4 reads, upon completion of the sale, the city auditor is hereby directed to receive the proceeds from the sale of the property into CDBG Fund 248, to be used for ineligible CDBG activity.
Thank you, Member McCary. Any comments or questions on this ordinance from city council members? Members Swank?
Member McCary, have we had the fair market value? Do we have it yet? Has there been an appraisal?
I have not received a final figure. President Crowell, have you...
The Service Safety Director had mentioned getting that appraisal, but I'm not sure it's been done yet. Mayor, do you have any information?
It's coming shortly.
Okay, so we should have it by two weeks for the second reading?
I believe that's accurate.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this ordinance? Mayor, anything to add? Members of the public? Okay, moving on. Ordinance 116-25 is an ordinance declaring property located at 458 Richland Avenue, no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and authorizing the mayor to sell said property to another political subdivision, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. This is very similar to the ordinance we just reviewed, so I'll jump down to Section 3 and indicate that, once again, this would be for the Athens Metropolitan Housing Authority. And Section 4 reads that, upon completion of the sale, the city auditor is hereby directed to receive the proceeds from the sale of the property into the General Fund 101, and appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $144,160 to General Fund 101/120 for transfer, and increasing the total appropriations by set amount. So again, there, the total price would be $144,160.
Thank you, Member McCary. Council, any comments or questions on this ordinance? Mayor, anything to add? Members of the public? Thank you. 116-25 has been read for the first time. Ordinance 117-25 is an ordinance authorizing the disposal of equipment no longer needed for a municipal purpose, introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you. The title pretty much says it all, we talked about it last week. This is for the government channel to dispose of three Tricaster systems used for broadcasting, one of which has already been replaced, and just see what they can get for it to put towards a backup.
Thank you, Member Thomas. Any questions or comments on this ordinance from city council members? Mayor? Members of the public? Seeing none, we now move on to announcements and other business. May I have a motion to accept the September 2025 financial reports? We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on those reports? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. The reports are accepted. May I have a motion to accept the August 2025 credit card transactions? A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. 2025 credit card transactions for August are accepted. We now have an opportunity for citizens to... Oh, yes, sure, please. Now we have other announcements and other business. Member Swank?
A couple of notices of public hearing. I'll read the first one. Athens City Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, November 3, 2025, in the council chambers on the third floor of the city building. This public hearing is to consider a recommendation from the Athens City Planning Commission to amend Athens City Zoning Code, Section 23.04.03, permitted uses in R3 residential zone multifamily, and 23.04.07B3 general business zone to permit temporary housing shelters as a conditionally permitted use. Full text of the recommendation is available by contacting D. Walker at CIAthens.OH.us. So that's the first public hearing, and that's the R3B3 zoning request that we spoke earlier in connection with the one we did up on Congress Street. Second notice of public hearing. Athens City Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, November 17, 2025, in the council chambers on the third floor of the city building. The public hearing is to consider a recommendation from the Planning Commission, Case 2506, proposing zone changes for properties along North Lancaster Street, Second Street, Columbia Avenue, and Columbus Road. Basically what we talked about up here. This hearing will take place before any final consideration of council on whether we should pass it, amend it, or not pass it. Thank you, President Crowell.
Thank you, Member Swank. Any other other business or announcements from city council members? Mayor, anything? Okay, we now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that were not covered on tonight's agenda. Mr. Glock, please.
My name is Rob Delich, live here in Athens, City of Athens, at 124 Morris Avenue. I serve on the city council-created pedestrian accessibility and bicycle task force, which was referenced earlier by Micah McCary, Member McCary. We passed a motion at our last meeting to send a letter to the city and the council, which I will read just part of, because I don't want to take any more time than I have to here, it's been a long meeting. Because we feel strongly about this issue, and about safety of, in this case, children in our city. So, dear Deputy City Service Safety Director, City Council President and Council, and the other city administration. Halloween is the most dangerous night in the country for children, pedestrians, due to it being one of, if not the only night, we as an American society encourage children to walk around their neighborhoods in any number. This danger they face is not poisoned apples, it is car traffic. Even when children stay on sidewalks perfectly, they must at some point cross the street. This puts them in direct conflict with vehicles. When traffic as usual is allowed during such an event, during dusk, children can too easily become statistics. In the near east and far east side neighborhoods specifically, children and parent participants in trick or treat numbers number in the thousands, far exceeding the sidewalk's capacity to hold them, meaning that children and parents often spill into the street outside of intersections. Additionally, exciting young children can easily be separated from their adults on the overcrowded sidewalk, leading to further safety issues. And no child can be expected to act perfectly, especially not during such an exciting time. This is compounded this year by the fact that the trick or treat Halloween Eve falls on OU Dad's Weekend, which will flood the town with drivers unfamiliar with our neighborhoods and roads. Physical safety measures taken by the City of Athens to curtail excess traffic from the neighborhoods would not only help keep everyone out of danger, but allow it to bloom into its full potential as a beloved Athens tradition. Therefore, the pedestrian accessibility and bicycle task force, by unanimous motion, is formally requesting the following safety measures. I'll just mention two items briefly. For the city to place sawhorses or barriers with signs bearing the legend "local traffic only" at the main intersections to the near east side neighborhood and far east side neighborhoods. For city police officers at those intersections to man those intersections to help alert people to take caution. If they do enter the neighborhood, go around the barrier and enter the neighborhood, and drive carefully. Those are the two things I want to mention in particular. The task force feels that these measures described above are minimally invasive to those traveling in the city. While ensuring the safety and comfort of all those participating in trick or treat this year, we look forward to the city's continued care and investment in the safety and traditions of us all. Sincerely, Stephanie Hunter, Rob Delich, Rory Brennan, Wolfgang Sutzle, Michelle Han, George Turner. Pedestrian Accessibility and Bicycle Task Force. So two points I want to make in addition to this is, OU Dad's Weekend is not something just thrown in here. I personally was hit by a pickup truck driven by an OU dad three years ago, almost to the day of this event, and had injuries that took a long time to recover from. And the court settlement has still not even happened, years later. It was an OU dad that, exactly like described here, didn't know where he was going, and made a rapid change in direction unexpectedly. That's the kind of stuff we can expect that complicates trick or treating this year. The other thing I want to mention is that this letter is written and sent to the above mentioned, because in the last two years, we've sent an email to the city administration asking to do something, just leaving it up to the administration to figure out something to do. And neither time have we received a response in any form. So, received is all we got, basically, both times. Never did the city administration respond to the task force saying, "We're not doing anything," or "We're doing something." No response. That's why I'm here tonight, and that's why the commission did what it, the task force did what it did.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public?
Aaron Thomas, 28, Avon Place. Oh, already? Man!
Gotcha.
So, just sitting here tonight, and over the, I mean, over the past few years, has been conversation about affordable housing in Athens, and I wanted to, you know, request that the city and the city council start working with the state... that the city and the city council start working with the state as they're trying to pass legislation for property tax relief. We talked about the unhoused, the homeless, and a lot of people in Athens on the fixed incomes are just two paychecks away from being homeless and losing their homes. We talked about the cost of housing in Athens, and there's a reason why the cost of housing in Athens is so expensive. You know, anytime the property taxes go up in Athens, it's going to roll down to the renter, it's going to roll down to the business owner. When you look at the average cost of housing in Athens, you know, non-student or just any housing, it's $1,400. There was a house in my neighborhood rented for $1,800 a month. Business locations are renting for $5,000 to $10,000 a month here in Athens, Ohio. There's a reason. If a person is paying $15,000 for their building, they're not going to eat that. If a person's paying $6,000 on their home that they're renting out, that they still have a mortgage on, that they're using it as some way to get passive income, they're going to pass it on to the renter. So, my whole thing that I have been looking at over the past year with everything going on to stay houses, hopefully that Athens can look at that, because I see a lot of people in my neighborhood that are retired. And my biggest fear is, do they fix income raise with the cost of property taxes and inflation? And one thing people look at when these levies do pass, it's $100 per $100,000. Well, if a house is selling the Far East Side for $400,000, that means everything else around that house is going to go up in property taxes, which leaves that person who may already own a house, that's retired, stuck with paying rent on the house they own. My whole thing is that we've talked about the people that are unhoused now. What about the retiring community in our area that potentially can be unhoused if they can't afford to pay $6,000 to $8,000 in property tax on a house that they currently own? So, I want to encourage the city to look at what's going on at the state and look at, is it going to be some opportunities that can help our region, our city, our county, the people that's here? Because my goal is to retire here in Athens, but can I afford to pay $10,000 on a house that I hopefully will own here in 10 to 15 years? What would that be at? So, I encourage you all to keep that on your radar and hopefully get something going here with the state that we can have something that can help some of these people in our neighborhoods that want to stay here, and hopefully they can afford to stay here. So, trying to keep people who own the houses affordable, that makes zero sense, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Any other questions from the, or comments from the community? Okay, seeing none, I take a motion for adjournment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We are adjourned at 9:46. We'll hang out for...